The notice requirement provided for the Oakland Public Media Law has been satisfied. Notice has been properly given. Said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News and Star Ledger on Monday, January 6th, 2020, as well as posting on the bulletin board and the clerk's office. Clerk may have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis.
President.
Councilman Good.
President.
Councilman McCray.
President.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransome.
President.
Vice President Armani.
Here.
And Council President Hockaday.
Here.
We have all members present at court.
Please rise from the plucking benches and remain standing for the invocation.
Let us declare the United States of America and the republic which we stand in, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the combined meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Approved. At this time, Councilwoman Davis has the floor to present her resolutions.
So I'm going to present your resolution to Walter W. Young III. So Walter, come up. You want to bring your family up, whoever you want to bring up, it's fine. The Plainfield Municipal Council hereby issue this resolution congratulating Walter W. Young III on being awarded the U.S. Air Force 2020 Chief of Staff Private Pilot Scholarship. Whereas Walter W. Young III, a gifted Plainfield High School student, Air Force Junior ROTC Cadet, has recently been awarded the U.S. Air Force 2020 Chief of Staff Private Pilot Scholarship, bringing pride and recognition to the city of Plainfield. And whereas Walter W. Young III has been an inspiring aviator since the age of 12. His future goal is to fly for the U.S. Air Force and to become an airline transport pilot. He is currently a certified private pilot with a glider rating and continues flying to build his flight hours and ratings. Side note, he doesn't even have his license yet. Whereas Junior ROTC Cadet Walter W. Young III serves as the core commander of his unit with the rank of Cadet Intended Colonel. In addition to Junior ROTC, he is also a member of the Plainfield High School Swim Team and a certified lifeguard for the Division of Parks and Recreation. And in 2019, Walter was recognized by the New Jersey State Legislature and General Assembly through citation and joint legislative resolution for his aviation achievements. He was also awarded the 2018 Win Award by the NAACP and was featured in the June 2018 edition of Soaring Magazine. He is currently a youth member of several prominent organizations that are focused on aviation and community empowerment, which include the NAACP, Black Pilots of America, Soaring Society of America, Aerial Club, Albatross, and Aircraft Owners and Pilot Association. Now therefore be it resolved in recognition of his noteworthy endeavors, the Plainfield City Council and the County of Union, State of New Jersey proudly congratulate Walter W. Young III and looks forward to his continued success. And be it further resolved that this governing body, on behalf of the entire citizenry of the great city, does hereby spread upon its permanent record the multiple achievements of Plainfield's own Walter W. Young III, adopted by the unanimous municipal council of the city of Plainfield.
Hello everyone, good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to give a few words tonight. First, I would like to thank Councilwoman Ashley Davis and the rest of the council for awarding me this award. It's an honor and it's a great privilege. Also, I would love to thank my parents, my mom and dad, here for supporting me throughout my life and just trying to put me on a great path through life. And lastly, I want to thank Chief Wilson here for pushing me and other cadets to strive in our lives and for our futures. Thank you everyone. I believe I will.
Okay, and now I will present a resolution recognizing the Mount Olive Baptist Church as the first black church in the city of Plainfield, congratulating them on 150 years of service. We have a lot of Mount Olive people here today, so we're just going to ask them that. And the deacons and Reverend Downing to come forward. The Plainfield Municipal Council hereby issue this resolution recognizing the Mount Olive Baptist Church as the first black church in the city of Plainfield and congratulating them on 150 years of service. Whereas it is desired that the governing body of the city of Plainfield to recognize institutions of faith whose purpose and endeavor remain dedicated to the pursuit of spiritual fulfillment. And whereas for over a century and a half, the Mount Olive Baptist Church has served generations teaching them to live in truth, love, righteousness. And whereas the Mount Olive Baptist Church, the first black church in the city of Plainfield, was founded in 1870 and has served God and the community of Plainfield for 150 years. And whereas the Mount Olive Baptist Church continues to fulfill its envisioned mission, not only to be the spiritual and cultural foundation for African-Americans, but to also play a role of educator and political leaders to be a refuge from and a resister to the harsh realities of social discrimination, economic dislocation, and political disenfranchisement. Now therefore be it resolved that on this unique auspicious occasion, the Plainfield City Council, County of Union, State of New Jersey takes pride in memorializing the achievements of the Mount Olive Baptist Church and further congratulates them for 150 years of continuous service to the Plainfield community. Be it further resolved that this celebration be entered into the permanent historical record of the city of Plainfield for the edification of all residents, especially congregants of Mount Olive Baptist Church, adopted by the unanimous municipal council of the city of Plainfield. Thank you. Alright.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the Honorable Mayor Mack, to the City Council President, to the County Council, to Councilwoman Ashley Davis, and to all yous here today. We just want to say thank you. Mount Olive is here for recognizing the work Mount Olive has done in this community for a long time. The work, Mount Olive was founded by 24 people who had the idea and the mindset to educate and to empower its own community. We look forward to carry on carrying on that tradition and keeping this institution that has been a mainstay in this community going and carrying out this mission as God gives us the ability and the power to do what he has called us to do. And that is to love everyone and to let people know that God cares and that we can carry out his mission here on earth. I'm going to ask that all those from Mount Olive, there's a lot of you just stand so they know you can.
Thank you. Unfinished business, just a final reminder for any councilperson who has not submitted their CBAC name to submit that to the clerk's office and to copy me. We'll now move to consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage. Clerk, please read MC 202001 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 202001 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the County of Union adopting a redevelopment plan for the TODD South redevelopment area. hereby certify that notice of public hearing ordinance was published in the Courier News on January 28th, 2020.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills-Ransome.
Yes.
Vice President Armani.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. Clerk, please read MC 202002 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 202002 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the Park Avenue Gateway Redevelopment Plan. It's hereby certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on January 28th, 2020.
The floor is now open for any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
I have the SCP about 1129, we're allowed to. I have in my hand a document that I'd like the City Corporation Council to take a look at prior to the passage of or the adoption of this. It may or may not have an impact, but it has to do with a deed restriction that's on that property.
Okay, Corporation Council, that way you want to give it to the clerk?
Thank you for your consideration.
Seeing no one else, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Some.
Second. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
McCray.
No.
Mills-Ransome.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday. I'm sorry, Vice President Armani.
Yes.
And Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. Clerk, please read MC 202003 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 202003 is an ordinance adopting the amended South Avenue East redevelopment plan. It's hereby certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on January 28th, 2020.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public hearing on this ordinance is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna.
No.
McCray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransome.
Yes.
Vice President Armani.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, this resolution has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 202004 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 202004 is an ordinance adopting the amended and stated redevelopment plan for the Block 233 redevelopment area. It's hereby certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on January 28th, 2020.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and the final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. Motion.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills-Ransome.
Yes.
Vice President Armani.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
And she and this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 202005 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 202005 is an ordinance amending schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article 14, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield to the Economic Development Threat Warning. It's hereby certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on January 28th, 2020.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion?
Some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Move.
Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmembers Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills-Ransome.
Yes.
Vice President Armani.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
And she and this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read Bond 1270 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
Bond 1270 is a bond ordinance providing for the North Avenue Pedestrian Mall street skate project through the New Jersey Transportation Bank in the city of Plainfield, the County of Union, State of New Jersey, appropriating $2,200,000 therefor and authorizing the issuance of $2,095,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance apart from the cost thereof. It's hereby certified that notice of public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on January 28th, 2020.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
Mary Burwinkle, 1785 Sleepy Hollow Lane. I have three concerns about this still. One is parking and vehicular use of the area. The second is safety. And the third is some hidden costs I see going forward with this project. For two days, two days in January and February, I went to the area and I drove around and I counted the cars who were parked there and the amount of activity there. On January 23rd, there were 50 cars parked on North Avenue and gathered place. And on February 7th, there were 55 cars placed, parked there. I really have no idea where those cars will go once this pedestrian mall. Director Jackson has said they would go to Lot 6. There were not 15 parking spots in Lot 6. And as we know, Lot 6 may be, may end up being under redevelopment for construction of a parking lot or another building. The other thing I'm concerned about is the fact that there aren't that many municipal parking lots where you can divert cars. And I'm on the zoning board and I know that a whole bunch of developers are coming to us and saying they want to build apartments and they're getting approval to do it, but they don't have room on the place for as much parking. So they say we promise we'll buy spots in Lot 6 or Lot 10, the exact lots that we're diverting all this traffic to. And you know, I'm wondering if we're double selling some of these lots. We don't have unlimited numbers of parking spots. The other problem I have with it is just that if you live there, like where are you going to put your car if you have a car? You know, if you live in one of the residential buildings. Now I have a cat, like I carry 25 pound bags of cat food and kitty litter like to my, you know, to my house. You know, if you live there, like how would you carry that upstairs? How would the Amazon truck get to you? You know, I think there's a lot of issues with taking away vehicular traffic there. The other, the other thing is I think that having it as a pedestrian mall, especially at night, may actually have a chilling effect on the use of the train station. Are people going to want to be walking there, walking many blocks away to find their cars or to find the people who are picking them up? You know, I just wouldn't use that, that train station. And the whole point of this transit village thing is to use the transit, not just to have the village. So I mean, I really think it could have a chilling effect on that. I also think that safety, for instance, policing, I think this could cause more need for policing. We've already discussed that maybe there'll be a satellite office on the pedestrian mall. There'll be cameras, there will be all kinds of other policing needs that may take away frankly from other parks in the city that need policing. I think that there may be some hidden costs associated with this. First of all, we're borrowing $2 million and taking money out of Louisiana or someplace to make a down payment on this. But you know, we're going to have to pay for the policing and that may take resources away from the rest of the city and that's ongoing. Landscaping, it was a beautiful elaborate landscaping that Director Jackson showed us. I bet that costs $10,000 a month for water. And believe me, none of the tenants there are going to use their water to water all those plants. I love John Williams, I love the DPW, but they're busy. We have 30,000 trees in Plainfield, that's what they work on and on the streets during the summertime. So they're not professional landscapers. And Director Jackson said we can get another water truck, but how much does that cost? So you know, I think that is something ongoing. The city seal on pavement, I mean, why do you need a city seal painted on the pavement? And how long will that last? The fact that it's a pedestrian mall, you still have to pile a snow. You still have to bring in the street sweepers. Like how much is that going to cost to paint there? And then how much is that going to cost to make it not look like this, you know, scratched up dopey thing in the middle of the road? I mean, that just seems like a ridiculous amount of money, a thing to spend money on to me. And we're borrowing this money and I'm assuming that when we do it, if this was going to have an effect on our very carefully curated municipal credit rating that we have or that are probably going to make it, that it's okay. I mean, I honestly don't, I honestly don't see why the city couldn't have just made a nice street skate there. You know, why do you need to block, make it a pedestrian mall? Just have it a one-way street if you want and just make street skate there. It just seems that it'd be much less expensive and much more useful overall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I entertain a motion to close public hearing?
So be it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Oh, I'll get there.
I'm just gonna, I'll get there. On second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Second.
Alright, there were some important, well, some issues raised that I'd like to give Director Jackson a chance to respond to. So I'll allow the council persons, whoever has a question, I'll give everyone who wishes one question to ask Director Jackson regarding the issues that were raised.
Well, they were numerous, but numerous ones, but public safety wise was one of them. So I think we could touch on that just for the sake of the public and...
Actually, from a public safety perspective, the more people you have on the street, the more eyes you have on the street. So actually, you are safer when you have hundreds of people on the street than you are at a period of time when you have a few people on the street. And there's lots of data that supports that, particularly in transit oriented development. So I want to point that out. The more eyes on the street, the more important. So for example, still drop down gates and gates and windows that are covered. You can see inside when something's happening if you're on the street and you can report it to the police versus a window that's covered with lots of boards and posters and those kinds of things. So from a safety perspective, that's one. Number two, we are talking about satellite for the police. That's their idea. In fact, I personally believe we'll need less police in that area. And so if you look at downtown, and I was recently in Somerville's downtown this Friday, this past Friday and past Thursday, and felt very comfortable walking the street, parking behind the shops and all of those places because there were people on the street. Not police, but people on the street. And there were areas where you have to walk between buildings to get to the restaurant. I went to Wolfgang Putz, Puck. So I just, I wanted to talk about that. But what we are creating is not just a downtown pedestrian mall, it's placemaking. It's creative placemaking. And what we're talking about with that is not only having shops, but restaurants and dining. Not what we currently have. We're bringing a first-class restaurant with a premier chef to Park Avenue where North Avenue deads into. We're bringing in the PNC Bank location, a banquet and events center there. And so we envision on that area, we're bringing new properties and new developments on North Avenue that will bring new restaurants, new places for entertainment. So that, yes, there is an investment, there's an investment on the part of the city, but also an investment on the part of developers and business owners. And then as it relates to landscaping and all of those things, our DPW group does an excellent, excellent job of maintaining landscaping in and around City Hall. We also have a downtown business improvement district. And a lot of business improvement districts help to supplement some of those kind of maintenance activities for landscaping. And so we will be discussing that with the city as well. As we talk about parking, I would hope that we're employing best practices associated with parking, which we are not today. It's absolutely clear to me that we're not employing best practices with parking today. Best practice don't include having your taxicabs take up your premier parking spaces. That is simply not a best practice anywhere. The taxicab company needs to be located somewhere where they can have private parking, where they have a private parking lot. Lot 6, we talked about that lot. And we envision that being a commuter, customer, and resident parking lot. Other towns have figured out the solution in managing parking. We have 107 spaces there today. There are 78 spaces that are permit spaces, but they are taken up by the businesses themselves. So the businesses are using the parking. What we would like to do is provide the businesses and employees parking somewhere else. And that is a best practice, by the way, as it relates to parking and parking management. As it relates to Lot 10, Lot 10 has 100 spaces. Of that 100 spaces in Lot 10 today, 50 of those spaces are used by PSEJ. They're not used by the rest of the community there. And that's a parking lot that is not that far away that we would like to employ some of the best practices to incentivize business owners and their employees to park there. And so as it relates to parking solutions, we talked about, you'll be hearing next month about the city... about the city scattered parking lots. And as it relates to lot six, the plan there is to create a building footprint or building envelope that includes structured parking. And there are a number of developers interested in doing that project. So we will be going out for requests for proposals to see who can bring us the best solution for that particular lot. And so as we talk about parking, I think we're thinking limited. We're not using best practices. We have a Timothy Haas, which is an expert in parking management and consulting as part of the master plan, who is looking at parking throughout the city and coming up with a set of recommendations for us related to parking as we move forward. We will be following that up with parking studies. With specific developments, we're doing parking studies to come up with the right answer. Because what I said before, and I'll say it again, is structured parking is expensive. I'm, 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 I'm out. Thank you.
That was one question and a long answer.
Thank you, Director Jackson.
Do you have a question, Councilman Davis?
Yeah. Um, so time and time again, I've asked the administration, Director Jackson, who spoke about how many parking spaces could we have available in those two lots? But I've also asked the administration, how many permits have we been giving out to those two lots? I do like the fact that you talked about best practices, but I'm concerned because you said we're gonna incorporate a parking study into the master plan, which isn't slated to be done until June of this year. However, we're looking to approve a bond for the pedestrian mall. When do we plan on starting that, starting construction on the pedestrian mall? Is it before the master plan is completed, or after the master plan is completed?
I'll let Director Dabney answer that question. But when I said best practices for parking, I, when I gave you the number of seventy-eight, those are seventy-eight permits for lot six that are for business owners. Part of our parking issue is that we don't have good data because of the parking systems that we currently have. So we need to upgrade our parking systems to have even better data. So we don't have data that says how long someone is sitting at a metered parking space and not paying. Because we don't have the right kind of equipment and data. So we will be working on that as well in terms of the recommendation. The start of the construction.
Good question. We're looking to start construction sometime this summer. Yes.
So after the master plan is completed?
After the master plan is completed, yes. And sometime somewhere, looking to move forward with construction work, go out with aid, et cetera, for contractors.
Councilman Armani?
Okay. So one of my concerns, and obviously I think, I, people that I, I guess, are frequent in the downtown area, especially the train station, one of my concerns was the drop-off and pickup. So obviously, if you're taking that space away, is there a designated space for, you know, cats? If not, I guess, for the citizens to be able to pick up and drop hang in.
Yeah. We do have a, two designated drop-off and pickup areas, both for taxis, Lyft, Uber, for deliveries as well. And don't forget that we are not changing the depot side of the train station. There's still parking available on the depot side. People can change their habits and get picked up if they'd like to close right there. It has a nice circular, half-circle driveway for pickup. Actually, it is a better-looking and better accommodating space on that side of the train station. So we may have buses dropping off today on North Avenue. Tomorrow, they'll be dropping off on, on depot side of the train station. So again, we're only changing North Avenue, we're not changing everything around the train station.
And obviously, you know, we're limited in terms of space in lot six. There's really not much more you could do but build up. So if you guys were to, you know, encourage building of a parking deck, how far off are we from such a structure?
We wouldn't be that far off. We could conceivably start, hmm, if we get approval for the plan, we get the plan approved, because that's kind of really the last step. We could conceivably go out this summer for RFP and really start in the fall to begin construction.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransome? Councilman McCray? And Councilman McKenna?
Yes, just real quickly on your parking account. Has the city done an audit of approved developments by the Planning and zoning board that required that the owners get parking permits for the residents to confirm that they are getting permits? So that we don't have a shortage that we're not aware of? Or we have people parking illegally in some of the lots in the evening?
No, we have not done an audit of parking. What we will do is a parking operation study.
Okay. I only brought that up because you mentioned how many people park there, so we don't really know how many people should be parking there.
There, right.
But my, but my question really is, you know, we've got this development going on. There's redevelopment plans for downtown that I voted for when I was on the planning board. We've got the restaurant going in and the bank that's gonna have a banquet, party facility. Both, if both have events going on, that's gonna stretch that hundred and twenty-six parking lot space behind the bank. So additional parking would probably be required for, for that, those venues if they're both at, at full steam on any given evening. But my, my point is, with all these what-ifs going on downtown, future developments, what we might or might not do with parking decks, which is in the very kind of early stages considering the investigation was just with you at the planning board meeting I attended last week. We're spending two-point-two million dollars that we could put towards other much-needed capital uses in the city in the near term on something that hasn't quite come to fruition yet, that we all hope will. So we don't really know what's gonna go on downtown, what it's gonna be made up of, what changes are gonna come down if the economy takes a dip, which economies are cyclical, and we're probably due for one at some point here, a dip. So we're gonna spend two-point-two million, and we could have developers put projects on hold, and we've got a big taxpayer investment downtown that's not doing anything. Why, why are we not considering vetting this more publicly with, with, with the residents? Getting all their ideas, getting their input further other than the likely intended one two years ago? And, and do this in, in a, look at this again in a year or two when we have a better idea of how the downtown is developing and what really makes sense? We might wanna spend three million on something completely different that enhances what's going on.
I do believe that this does enhance what's going on. There are parking decks, we will bring legislation to you in March on a big project going on downtown that will be providing additional parking. As well as, we are also looking at the county lot, parking lot, and have been in discussions with the county about shared parking in that lot that is, that parking deck that is currently vastly underutilized any given day of the week. So if you go from eight to five, and then in the evening, it's even more desolate. But in terms of restaurants and event centers, how they handle parking when they have peak parking hours is they do valet parking. They park further away, and we can provide them parking further away and let them valet, which will not inconvenience their customers. So that's a best practice for event centers as well as restaurants.
Thank you. Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis?
No.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransome?
Yes.
Vice President Armani?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
By favor to oppose this ordinance being adopted on second reading. Thank you. A total of thirty minutes has been allocated for public comments, limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open.
I'm going to check the 10. I'm at Green Avenue in Playfield. I would just like to keep that from the conversation you just had. I, I'm really uncomfortable with this wall. One of the reasons, few of the reasons, is number one, I do a search.
Which resolution are you referring to?
Am I not allowed to speak openly now?
This is not, well, we, we will have public comment afterwards.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You're certainly welcome to come back.
Sorry, sorry.
Not a problem. Just a reminder, this, this portion is, is just for items, ordinances that are being considered this evening. There will be an additional public comment at the end of the evening. Resolutions being considered this evening or general public comment?
We just spoke one about the parking, about North Avenue.
Okay, we'll save that for a public comment at the end.
Anyone would like to speak on the Cisco program that you have here, that you guys were thinking about stopping?
Okay, so that's one of the resolutions, right? Yes, you can come forward.
I happen to be, first of all, my name is Kyle Brown. I live at Hiller Ford Grant Avenue in Playfield. I happen to be one of the students that attended the program itself. Coming from work and coming to the class, we had fifteen students at the beginning of it. We had a lot of problems communicating with the school itself. A lot of problems with the instructors themselves. Communication problems. Communication between ManTech and the students. We didn't fail because we were not there. We failed because, well, some of us failed because I'm still taking my CPM at the end of this month, which is the complete combined test. A lot of this studying I did on my own because of beginning teachers who were really equipped for us. Okay, adults, they were equipped for children. And they tried to run the class like they were children, follow me. Adults need some type of, I need to know why I'm doing certain things. They never did that with us. We reached out for Dot L, Mr. West, and then we got real feedback from him until I started reaching out for the city and Ms. Jones, who really interfered and got into what we, what we really needed, which was a better teacher. We had one teacher who wouldn't teach anything, sit there and watch porn all day, not follow the instructions that we were given or answer questions, just followed me. I could sit there and take notes like I did all night, and I didn't stand around showing. A few of us, like myself, I kept most of my classmates day and night, trying to keep them involved. A lot of them quit because they couldn't handle the pressure. System works, okay, if you learn properly. But if you're not learning properly, you're not gonna learn, you're gonna fail. It's not an easy program. It's not designed for everybody to say, I can cover this a day and I can get everything. The instructors felt like if you missed it, I can go back. But what about the student that is in there? And we're waiting to move on. The instructors didn't wanna hear that. And it wasn't teaching, we were teaching ourselves. I went out and found other assets for us to use. I had a cousin who graduated from another school in Newark, who's a part of the system program, would come up on weekends and help us to get ahead. But far as talking to Mr. Brown and Mr. West, we never got any feedback. The one teacher, he just had a total problem with us asking questions about what we should do, how we should do it. And then we finally got through Ms. Jones and there, in his office, they put in the proper teacher. We couldn't go back.
Speaker's time's up. So you did, sir, you did get a teacher that was better after that?
Yes, toward the end, yes, we did.
Another person was, was, were they released, the one?
Much easier.
All right. After, after the meeting, can you speak with me and, and also with Director West regarding the incident that you, you mentioned? It was quite disturbing.
We, we sent emails.
Okay. I, I'd like to hear more about that. Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Hooker. I'm at 136th Avenue, where they do the development. Also on this program, the Cisco program. First of all, I want to thank the city for providing us with the opportunity for our education, getting to the effective field, especially our advancement. Ms. Jones, she's been doing a wonderful job. I'm one of two people, along with Mr. Brown, that were here for the initial one, starting Halloween night, 2018. So I've been here over a year and a half, holding this, excuse me. Resources were allocated, we had the, the proper learning instruments that we needed to complete our, our certificate program or get our certification. Where we lacked at, where I felt I was lacking at, was the commitment of the faculty. We went months without having a teacher, but we were continuing our education. Like I said, through Ms. Jones, did an excellent job, everybody else who was involved with her, working with her, and Mr. Brown, who brought me back along with us. I'm committed to finishing this. I think it's a great program. You know, being that it's the first year that's been implemented, and we're the first class with it. Out of fifteen, it's still two, but we still wanna do it. We wanna make it happen because I think, well, this is a great thing. You know, there are some learning curves and some bumps you're gonna go through, but this is the first one. And I say, I'm gonna stick it through regardless, I'm gonna make it happen. Here, so first class fails, then it may not be a success. Well, I wanna make, I wanna see a full picture of that happens. So I'm gonna do whatever I can, like I said, I wanna thank everybody for the opportunity that you provided me. And hopefully I'll be able to finish this and I'll come back and I'll shoot you my certificate. We're good, Steve. Thank you.
The end of this month, but we'll have it.
Seeing no more, may I have a motion to close?
Nancy, you're eleven-twenty-nine, we're land, and I see you have a new item on your agenda, recognizing the legacy of Frank H. Black. I just wanna thank the council for doing that. I did go to his wake. There were a lot of pictures of Playfield there when he was mayor. I asked the family for copies of those pictures to put in the library because I thought they were very significant photographs from that time of his life. He did a lot of things for the city that a lot of people are aware of. It was a tumultuous time when he became mayor, and he took some positions that his party didn't like, but he still did the right thing, and I appreciate the fact that this council's recognizing it. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Nancy. Do you have a motion to close public comments?
Some.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public comments are now closed. Clerk, will you please read the consent agenda this evening?
The consent agenda has been identified as Resolutions eighty-seven dash twenty through ninety-two twenty, Resolution ninety-four twenty through one-hundred-and-twenty, Resolution one oh two, Resolution one oh three twenty, and one oh five through one oh eight twenty.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Seven.
Clerk, may I have a roll call, please? Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransome?
Yes.
Vice President Armani?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Consent agenda items approved. Clerk, will you please read the remaining resolutions?
Resolution ninety-three twenty, authorizing the renewal of a contract with Adnan and Difreskar.
May I have a motion to approve? Go. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Approved.
Resolution one oh one twenty, authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper.
May I have a motion to approve? Go. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Approved.
Resolution one oh four twenty, designating North Avenue Urban Renewal LLC as the developer for the redevelopment of certain property identified as Block four oh two, Lot seven.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Approved.
So we have a motion to second it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Approved.
Resolution one oh nine twenty, authorizing approval to enter into agreement with Neil, Neil to provide Cisco certification certificate.
May I have a motion to approve?
Council President, I actually have a couple of followers from the last.
Okay, we'll get a motion in a second, then I'll tell you a question, okay? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All right, questions?
At the, at the agenda setting, we spent a little time on the Cisco training, and I, I have to say that after the two gentlemen, got up tonight to speak, I'm even more, um, bothered by the program. Not by the fact that we're offering it, although I, I still struggle with the, the, um, why the, a city is, is using taxpayer money for an education program instead of somehow working it towards the school, Union County College, et cetera. But, but it's apparent, and, and this is my fear, we're already couple, several hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars spent on this program, and we have one person certified, and numerous people, people struggling, uh, for one reason or another. Some because they weren't ready for the rigors of the program, some because it was apparently not all around a well-organized and well-run program, so they, they struggled with it, understandably. But I'm trying to figure out what, what we're doing to improve upon that, short of saying we're getting better teachers. And the last time I talked about metrics. And if we're going to go through with this, and I'm assuming that the majority of the council, my council colleagues are going to vote for this, I was told that there would be some metrics that would be collected so that we could manage against this, um, in the future, so that we're not spending what is now another, what, sixty thousand dollars, and we have yet no participants getting certified and getting a job, which is the point of the program. So do we have the metrics really created by the technology IT department?
Councilwoman, um, you don't have the metrics. Um, I was not aware that that was requested, so I apologize. That's something I can work on, um, getting, um, after, but you did, uh, mention, what are we doing to ensure that we're more successful, um, moving forward? And one of the things that we're doing is that we're having, um, several more information sessions in the past. I believe there was one information session that took place. Um, we've had, we're, we're scheduled for information sessions with prospective students. We're setting the expectations, um, more fully in terms of the time, uh, that is required, the time commitment that's required from the students in order to be successful. One of the other things that we've done is that we've cut the size of the classes, so that we can give the students more one-on-one attention, and to work with those who are, who may be not able to move at the same pace as others. The, you know, we're asking them to make a commitment to actively seek employment at the end of the program. And, um, we have also added tutoring sessions at the end of the certification program to help the students prepare to take the exam. Um, additionally, Cisco has changed the, uh, the program, so there are significant, significantly less hours that are required. It used to be two hundred and eighty hours, it's now just a little over two hundred, I believe, two hundred and one. So we have, we recognize what, um, some of the mistakes that happened in the past, and we've taken steps to, um, ensure that does not recur. You know, at the end of the day, I think that it's about, um, as the city moves forward, helping our residents to become, you know, equipped to move forward with the city. We want them to be educated, we want them to get better paying jobs, so that they can take advantage of the change and the growth that is taking place in Plainfield.
I, I appreciate that comment, and I think everybody in this room agrees with that, but spending hundreds of thousands of dollars and achieving only one person that got certified and hasn't gotten a job in it, um, is not a smart way to either, to either help individuals or to spend taxpayer money. And not having metrics, after we had a long conversation about it the last meeting, and I understand you were, you have been at the last two council meetings, or you were here for the first one, part of it. That it's not our responsibility to get that notice to you, and I, and I really think, this is very important, and this is endemic of, of how these things fall apart. So we've, we're spending sixty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, and we're not asking anything as far as reporting or outcomes, or even discussing, um, who's qualifying whether the students have the skill set. I couldn't get into a Cisco program, I could not do any of that to save my soul. So if we're going to talk to them about how many hours they're taking, but we're not going to say they have the skill set, um, math skills, et cetera, to do the actual work, um, we're going to set them up for failure and waste taxpayer money, and that's not our goal here. I, I really think that we need to start building statements of work around these things and KPIs, and have metrics that come back to the administration and the council, so that we can look at this and say, guess what? We shouldn't be in the Cisco business as a city, let's figure out how to do this through somebody else and let them manage it. I'm not going to win that argument on whether this passes or not, but I, I would really recommend that this not, that, that people vote against this, my colleagues vote against this, until we learn how to, how to hold, you know, ourselves and the administration accountable to the taxpayers. This is sixty thousand dollars that we have kind of a rough idea of how we're going to spend after we've already spent several hundred thousand and failed. So, but that's my position on it.
Okay, you have a question?
Yes, I'm, I'm following up on what I said the last time, I was even quoted in the paper, gosh, I can never get that. But I am concerned, um, my background is education, and I am very serious, and I heard you speak about your teachers. And so I am concerned that there is some evaluation of teachers. And I also agree with the metrics part, but I wouldn't want to put anything on it now before these two men and anyone else who came through that first class can be successful. But if I'm hearing someone saying to me that they didn't have the teachers, and they couldn't get that fixed, that's a problem for me. That's, that's a problem, okay.
We, um, once we recognized that there was an issue with the teacher, we replaced that person. And the person that is going to be running, Neil Amin, who is going to be running the, um, classes on campus to get PPA, he's the one who stepped in and was able to bring, um, those two students that, who came up and spoke, was able to bring them to where they are. He has done tutoring with them, he's the one that is taking them to the finish line, so they can get their certification. And he's the one that we're going to be working with moving forward. As soon as we, on, as soon as we were notified that there were issues with that teacher, we immediately took steps to have them removed from the program.
Okay, I guess I'm not being argumentative, but I thought that was a time lapse in terms of how long that teacher was there. So many emails going back and forth, you know, so I'm glad you're on. I will be coming back with these, he'll come with metrics, I will always come with evaluations, because they have to stay, and I feel they can't learn.
Just, yeah, just to really piggyback, I want to say that I am glad that you guys have made some structural changes to the program, for the fact that we did have two Plainfield residents come and speak to, you know, the changes and feeling that they were going to be successful going forward, that we should continue to invest from a workforce development standpoint, so that our residents can get good paying jobs. I'm definitely committed to that, so I think that we should continue, as well as put good, um, you know, um, metrics in place, just to make sure that we're tracking the way that we need to, but I am, you know, proud to support this.
Councilman, good?
Director Hunt, I'm so glad that you spoke tonight, because there was some things that you mentioned that was a concern of mine as well. And you certainly brought some light to some things, my colleagues, uh, Councilwoman, um, Mills Ransom, piggybacking off of her, that is a concern. But I am glad that the two gentlemen were here tonight. And, um, someone mentioned something about, uh, being a struggle. Well, I'm pretty sure this is not easy for a lot of the students. And in life, you do have struggles sometimes, and the ones that hang in there, it does pay off in the long run. So I fully support this, I think it's a great program, and for us to give up on it now, I think it would be ridiculous. So, thank you for that information that you gave, and thanks to the gentleman that were here during this evening.
Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Yes, um, I just want to follow up on the comments that I made at the agenda fixing meeting about the need for resident buy-in. So my concern is that we have these classes, and last week at the agenda fixing meeting, um, your representative really talked about how, uh, students will come and then they will fall off, but because they were already enrolled, we couldn't re-enroll somebody else, we couldn't get that money back. Um, and not having that resident buy-in is a concern, because it doesn't really give them an incentive to keep coming unless they, unless they want to. Um, I'm also concerned about the comments from the gentleman, it sounded like the first gentleman that spoke had to do a lot of this teaching to himself. And when we're talking about, to echo Mayor Council McKenna's point, when we're talking about using taxpayer funds, it's about what's good for the whole or the majority. And the fact that we only had two out of fifteen, which is about thirteen percent, is very concerning. Um, and is my understanding that we're, that this program isn't currently going on, but we're going to start again in March?
Yes.
So, I'm concerned that, do we have, do we have the systems in place to get the metrics that Councilwoman McKenna is looking for, or get those evaluations that Councilwoman Mills Ransom is looking for?
So I'm not sure that, did you ask for evaluation?
Councilman McKenna's, mine is all about evaluations and good teachers, okay? And I was a science major, I understand your struggles, I can help you some, I guess. Not with the technology piece, we're good through the math.
Just so that everybody knows, there are, there is the ability built in to track each and every student by course monitor. You know, whether there are study issues, uh, their test scores, all of those things are, are available. You know, it's, the onus is on the teacher to put that in, and followed up by administration to ensure that that's being done. But that capability does exist.
So, to rephrase the question, what's the plan moving forward to capture those evaluations, to capture those metrics, to make sure that this investment is actually a good investment? So the next time this comes up, when it has to be renewed again, or if it doesn't pass and it comes back up again, um, what's in place so we know whether or not this was successful or not?
Well, we are holding our instructors more accountable in terms of entering the information in the NACAD system, that's one thing. And I'd just like to respond to something that you said about, um, uh, I forget, it's got to say, but what I'd like to say is that we had one, we ran one class, one set of classes. I do think that, um, we learnt a lot from what happened in the first, uh, course of instruction that we had, and we are taking steps to address all the issues that came up. And I do think it would be, you know, a mistake to abandon it now. We've had, you know, well over thirty people who have showed up, showing interest in, you know, being a part of the second class. Unfortunately, we only have ten spaces for the day students and ten spaces for the evening students intentionally. So we have lessened the investment that the city is making, uh, to ensure a higher success rate.
Councilman McCray?
One thing I'd like my colleagues to keep in mind is that when you embark on a program such as Cisco, sometimes the initial class is a difficult one to deal with, because people don't really understand. And as the director said, they're holding information sessions to enlighten the people of what their commitment will be. And as we move forward, we will then start to see better matrices come out of this class. So to say we're going to abandon it because you spent sixty thousand dollars is not much of an investment when you're talking about the human capital, which we are trying to improve. Sixty grand is minimal, because anybody who has ever been through Cisco, and I've been through Cisco, I've been through major mainframe computer and networking systems, I sold them for thirty years. So they, these gentlemen, the fact that they're, um, coming and saying they want better instructors, it's upon us to make sure that they get that, and as a council, it's upon us to say, we will work with you, as opposed to say, we want to pull back because we made a minor investment. So we should be really applauding these gentlemen and holding our people accountable to make sure that we deliver a program which is of value to our citizens.
Really, really quickly, just on that, and, and I'm not saying anything about pulling back, if you were referring to me, but I would say to these gentlemen is, we're sorry that we spent taxpayer money and put you through a really miserable experience, and you didn't, uh, get to the end with your certification. That, that to me is, is what we should be apologizing for, and I, and I hope that you're able to get to the end run and, and endpoint, get your certification and enter the IT field.
I see you guys speaking ahead of the audience, but we're, we'd also like to say, we're grateful that you participated in this, in this program. And, you know, we are committed to you and to all of our residents to do what we can to make sure that we're moving forward, uh, our, our residents. So, I mean, I think that this is, uh, a good program, it certainly has its issues. Uh, again, a robust, robust discussion on the issues, on how to make this program better, is important. Uh, I do believe that metrics are certainly important, that we did, we need to know, uh, you know, the, the age, the education levels of, of the individuals that, that come in. We need to know their prior work experience, uh, we need to know if they have any experience in technology, uh, and so forth. These are all things that we just want to know, so we can keep track of, uh, the, the metrics in terms of, what, what is the prototype of the individuals who are successful, uh, in this program? And how can we, you know, in the future, market to those individuals, you know, so, uh, but, you know, I think that's information that, that, that we should have, so, uh, we'll continue to do that. So, Clark, can I have a roll call?
Roll call on Resolution one oh nine dash twenty, Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, opposed, Resolution passed. Resolution R ten dash twenty, authorizing approval, approval to enter into agreement with Union County College to provide Cisco training.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Yes.
Any extension, two, that's two, uh, in opposition. Any abstentions? Uh, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose Resolution sixty?
May I have a motion to add, uh, R one eleven twenty to the agenda for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Approved. I will now entertain a motion to adopt R one eleven twenty?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Approved. We now come to ordinances on the first reading. Clark, will you please read ordinance MC twenty twenty oh six by title?
MC twenty twenty oh six, ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County Union, authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with North Avenue Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain properties identified on the city's tax map, it's block four oh two, lot seven, identified in the city's tax records as nine twenty-six, dash ten eighteen, North Avenue.
MC twenty twenty oh six. We'll take questions from council, starting with Councilman McKenna.
You know, one question I have about this is, um, I was noticed, I saw this week that, that Jersey City is going to audit their tax abatement programs, including pilots going back about thirty years, because they feel that they have not been getting, um, the proper payments, um, through the programs. So what, what do we do now to audit our existing pilots? Because we have a fair number, I'm thinking maybe twelve, fourteen out there that are paying every year pilot, you know, Liberty, et cetera. But what, what are we doing to ensure that the, because these are on, um, average gross rent, correct? So that the, the, the table in our. So that the, the, the table in our packet is a guideline based on what they think the market rent's gonna be. If they get that, if they are renting these things like crazy, they're gonna tweak the rents, I'm guessing.
Right. So, I do personally recommend, I would really defer the question to Director Finan, but I personally recommend periodically auditing pilots. Uh, to me, that's the best practice in terms of periodically auditing them to see if you're getting your fair share of, of the revenue. But each year, uh, each, uh, URE, or urban renewal entity has to provide, uh, the finance department with the audited financial statements by March thirty-first of each year. And really, the finance department has to go through that audit, uh, to make sure, uh, that we're getting our fair share of the revenue. And I do also recommend periodic training on pilots and review of pilots as well. And so, uh, Director Weston, I, I discussed that, uh, last year. Uh, we couldn't get a date together, but we will do that date this year. Uh, because, you know, the pilot, uh, is an important financial document. And so, having those audits, uh, and reviewing those audits periodically, uh, is very important. There's such a thing in the statute as excess revenues. So, if a urban renewal entity has excess revenue, then for that excess revenue part, we can charge conventional taxes. So, those audits are very important.
Councilman McCray?
Good.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom? Vice President Armadi, no questions? Councilman Good?
Aye, Councilperson.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, um, so Director Jackson, you just said that, um, the extra revenue we can, um, charge more of the conventional taxes, you know what I'm saying?
No, what I said is if you exceed a certain revenue threshold in a given year, uh, you can charge conventional taxes for that excess revenue.
Okay, but on the agreement, it says, um, the aggregate gross rent or forty percent of conventional taxes.
Okay, so.
So, can you just kinda like explain that either or part?
Okay, so, remember I said that there were, uh, last meeting, that there were step-ups in the pilot? Uh, so during those step-ups, the, uh, the pilot has to be at least or more than a certain percent of conventional taxes. So, that's during that particular step-up. So, at one point during the step-up, it has to be, uh, more at least or more than twenty percent, then forty percent, then sixty, and then eighty percent of conventional taxes. So, there's step, step-ups, and so that's what that number is that you're looking at.
Okay, what if the project stabilizes before the thirty years?
Well, we hope it stabilizes, uh, soon. So, when we say it stabilizes, we mean that it's, uh, uh, rent leased up. So, it's at least at ninety-five percent leased up. That's a stabilized building. In terms of debt coverage and the financials, that's a different story. So, when we look at it, we're looking at their expenses as well as their revenue and looking at all of those numbers when we look at coverage for the project and a stable project. So, a lot of projects stabilize at, at ten years and they may sell, or they may refinance the project. Uh, but the taxes for us, it would still work in the same way. Okay, thank you.
Hold on, I entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Court, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, MC202006 has been adopted on first reading.
But can we please read ordinance MC202007 by title?
MC202007 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield County Union, New Jersey, adopting amendment to the North Avenue redevelopment.
Are there any questions from council, starting with Councilwoman Davis?
No.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilman, Vice President Armadi?
No.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
No.
Councilman McCray?
No.
Councilman McKenna?
Yep. So, I'm curious, what, was it two, two planning board meetings ago? I mean, two, the first one of this year, I think. Uh, the planning board, um, I happened to attend it as a members member, revised this redevelopment plan for North Avenue, which happens to be the same basic area as the pedestrian mall. Um, but yet the planning board was approving that and reviewing the suggested changes from a plan that was, I, I forget. Ten years old?
The plan was adopted in two thousand.
Okay, so.
Yeah. It's old.
So, the planning board reviewed that with the vision of the street being the way it is. Yet, the city, the city was already two years into a pedestrian mall and had, uh, two weeks later, a bond issue on the agenda. So, the planning board put, approved first floor residential in that plan, um, which is statistically a killer for pedestrian malls, by the way. Since we were talking, we were talking about statistics on parking earlier. So, why, why are we, why are we putting so many pieces out of order when a planning board should really review this with the understanding that they've reviewed and approved a pedestrian mall, which they haven't even seen? I, I think they would have looked at that plan completely differently or had different questions if they had known that two weeks later, a pedestrian mall was gonna come up.
In reference to that question, as the official planning board representative, that plan was unanimously approved by the planning board with the understanding of where they were looking and where they wanted to go.
Uh, but they have not seen the plans or any concepts for a pedestrian mall, is what I'm saying.
They saw both plan. I was the official representative.
Charles, I was there, I said, I was there, I didn't, I didn't see a presentation about a pedestrian mall. Has that appeared before the planning board? Because I was on it for six years until the end of December. I never saw a presentation on pedestrian mall.
If you went to the, uh, information sessions, you would, all planning board members were there, and none of them had a question about that.
That, it did not come for an official planning board application.
Make a difference.
It does.
I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved. Second.
All right, clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Yes, yes. McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, ordinance been adopted on first reading.
Clerk, will you please read MC202008 by title?
C202008 is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish cap bank.
Are there any questions from council, starting with Councilman McKenna?
Yes, what, what is anticipated need for this cap bank potential? So, no, it's not used, it's got the three-year rolling.
We carry forward two years. The way the legislation reads is that when the budget is approved, it gives council the ability to increase the appropriation of limits by three point five percent. We will be introducing a budget. Historically, that budget has come in under the calculated appropriation level, but should council decide to take action, you know, we could go up to three point five percent.
No, there, there's a lot of information out there about the cap being used strategically for, um, emergencies or unforeseen issues, um, because it's got the two-year roll over, or combination, or however you want. Cause it's not real money at this point, it's unappropriated. It's a delta between what was available to appropriate and what was appropriated.
That is correct.
So, what would be, what are we gonna go in, what, what would we ever call on that for? That we couldn't use from our, you know, every year we budget a surplus.
Every year, we have been, we have been putting in over six million dollars a year from surplus to make the budget.
But we, but we budget a surplus every year to roll over to the next year. E- every year, it's always pretty much within the same, you know, give or take six hundred thousand-ish.
We have had the ability over the last six years to have a surplus that goes unused in addition to the, in excess of six million dollars that we've been contributing. There, you know, uh, if you look at what a best practice would be, that surplus should be, would be much higher than that, but that has nothing to do with the, the cap bank. The cap bank would say that we now had, let's say in this case, two point five million dollars of, uh, of appropriations that were deemed to be important enough for the city to include in the budget. We would have the, we would be allowed to do that. You know, it could be hiring a hundred police officers in addition to what we have. You know, twenty new firemen. You know, those kinds of things can take us, you know, outside of, uh, that and use the cap bank. It is just something from a strategic perspective, you'd rather have than not have. And we haven't had the requirement to use it yet, you know? And so, I would hope that that would continue to be the case, but, but again, we have not introduced the budget yet. I can't speak for how the budget's gonna end up. And but once it's introduced, council owns the budget. Council makes the final decisions on how much that budget is going to be. What we have doing is recommending that council include the three point five percent increase in appropriations, just in case.
Councilman McCray? Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
No.
Vice President Armadi? Just to set the record straight, cause some of our constituents are under the guise that we're raising taxes. Can you say unequivocally whether we are or are not raising taxes?
The way I would wanna respond to that is that we use a, a standard ordinance sent down from the state. We have said the same thing, and the phrase that was captured in laws and other things today, we have used that same phrase since at least twenty fifteen. I'd go further back in history, but I'd be willing to venture a guess that if I went back further, I'd see that too. But we use the same language since at least twenty fifteen. You know, that, uh, it's been deemed, you know, that, uh, for health, safety, and welfare, we should do this. That's a standard phrase that the state says should be included in your cap bank ordinance.
Council, Council Vice President, if I could just answer that as well. Just unequivocally, this is, this ordinance is not a tax increase.
Okay, well, I wanna hear. Say the question, say it loud. Thank you. Councilman Good?
Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, Councilman Armadi did take my question. Um, I just wanted to make sure for the benefit of not only the residents here, but the residents who'll see this media later on, off PCTV or on the website, that this ordinance is not to increase taxes. The increase in taxes comes with the introduction of the budget, correct?
No, it comes with the adoption of the budget.
With the adoption of the budget comes a potential increase in taxes. Yes, correct. Thank you.
Correct.
Council President, just a point of clarification from the questions on the other side. Um, I, I just wanna be clear that what this ordinance does is give the city, the administration, the ability to increase the appropriation level by three point five percent over last year, right? The cap is two and a half, we're giving you permission to go to three and a half. If you bring, if you submit a budget at the full three and a half, it is two point five seven five eight million dollars, uh, above and beyond last year's expenditure, which requires us to then levy that somehow, uh, after you factor in any new pilots and things like that. That difference then would have to be either, one, this, this council would have to claw down that, uh, that two point five in the budget because we don't, we, if we don't feel there should be a tax increase. If we cannot get any savings out of that proposed budget, that two point five million has to be raised. So, that would be a tax increase of some sort, let, included in the levy.
If that's the way it played out, you would be one hundred percent correct.
So, we're giving you permission to increase the credit card limit, and then you're gonna let us know when you submit the budget, whether or not you're gonna spend that.
You are giving us the ability to bring forward a budget that might, uh, have three point five percent in additional appropriations. What I'm telling you is that historically, we have not done that, but do we have the ability to do that? Yes, but we don't approve the budget.
So then, so my council colleagues need to know that if they, if, if they feel like we are not raising taxes with this, that if the administration comes in with three point five percent more appropriation, then we likely will be raising taxes unless we as a group, as a body, um, middle down that, that appropriation request. So, it kind of is, it's permission to maybe increase the levy and then we negotiate and finish.
Okay, all right. Hopefully, that was clear. That's the current news, that's what. That's all of the sixty minutes that's been allocated for all public. Let's go on it then. Can I have a motion to, uh, to.
So moved. Second.
Uh, can I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
No.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, this ordinance been adopted on first reading.
Thank you.
So, that sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented, you wish to be heard. Give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of any single speaker is allowed, will be limited to five minutes. The floor is now open.
Johnny Perchard, formerly of seven two three R on the avenue of Plainfield, now four one zero Spur Santa Garwood. A few things I'd like to say to the council. I'm glad that, uh, Cadet Young had been, uh, awarded the, uh, awarded the.
The resolution.
Yes, the resolution. And I certainly hope that, uh, that he'll be, uh, he'll be, uh, ready to, uh, become an air force officer when he graduates from college, or probably from Colorado Springs. When he was up here along with the chief master sergeant who accompanied him, I rendered a handful out of, I, I rendered my hands to out of respect for, for Cadet Young. Out of respect, because I was a soldier myself. And speaking of soldiers, we lost sixteen men during the war in Vietnam on Plainfield. They lost their lives fighting for our country. Those who returned, they were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I think that we ought to retire that word Nazi once and for all. It's just as bad as another N-word.
Yes, it is.
The poor brave soldier in there despised, no account as a stranger. Remember, he's his country's stay and day in our danger. And lastly, we need to reactivate the hospital here in Plainfield at the Milenberg site. We need that hospital, we need it very badly. It's a national security issue too. What if another nine eleven attack occurs? We'll need that hospital very, very badly. And I'm not talking about head colds or earaches, I'm talking about many people's lives. So, the sooner we activate Milenberg, the better off we all will be. Don't make myself clear.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh.
Just your address for the record?
Uh, one thirty-six North Avenue, apartment six. So, uh, my residents came up with the topic about the North Avenue. And I do have issues with their, actually on a normal day parking, you know, uh, along with the wait because we only have one side of the street to park on. Uh, sometimes I wait fifteen, twenty minutes. Then you got a situation where you may have groceries or something like that. Uh, when I moved there over two years ago, I saw the parking was behind Peet's Bank. Uh, now with that being developed and everything, I'm hit or miss when I'm parking over there. I've accumulated over seven hundred dollars in tickets as a resident. So, uh, and I even spoke to a couple of the, the parking officials, like, when you write in my ticket, don't you see my, my address? You're running everything, you're seeing my address right there. You know, so it's, it's become, you know, difficult. I mean, as far as flying a parking space there, like I said, over, over two years I've been there. Over seven hundred dollars of fines, parking tickets here I paid because of that, because I live there. You know, as opposed to going down every two hours and putting the dollar in, you know, there's no parking spaces around there. So, I'm hoping, you know, it's. So I'm hoping, you know, if this plan goes through, that there's something that's going to accommodate me, whether it's a permit or something like that. But it's, it's awful situation. Thank you, man.
Thank you. I, I just have a quick question for administration. When we have new developments that come before us, for, for us, before land use boards, there's a parking requirement in there. And as we talked about earlier, sometimes we have them get permits. If they're downtown, we have to get permits in lots and make sure that they have those. W- w- why do none of the apartment, uh, units on North Avenue have some sort of permitted parking in lot six?
I'm not aware of that.
They don't require to provide parking?
That was not in my lease, I don't, I don't know anything about that, I just know that.
Oh, no, I, and I'm sorry, I wasn't expect, I was looking for an answer from the administration for you, I was.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no.
I don't know the answer to that question, I would have to explore it, uh, because it kind of predates me. Uh, they do not have, from the data I have, parking permits in lot six, uh, based on the data I have. But I don't know what the arrangement was for that particular building. And again, one of the best practices, uh, is to provide permit parking overnight, uh, on streets. So that's another, uh, it doesn't have to be, it could be on other streets where he's talking about, uh, parking. So we'll just have to look at the parking situation there.
Is there a way that somebody can connect with this gentleman and help him? Seven hundred dollars.
Council President, if I may?
Thank you.
Um, can we have a list of the variances for the properties along North Ave? Because I know with some of the, um, variances, they have that stipulation in there that the buildings have to get, um, permits for the residence, or they have a variance where they don't have to worry about parking at all. So if we can get, um, a list of the buildings on North Ave where the pedestrian mall is going to be, what variances, if any, those buildings have, just for the education of us, and when residents call us about parking complaints, we can let them know what the municipal ordinance is for that area, or if they're not, their building has a variance.
I don't manage the parking, but what I will say, uh, is, yes, uh, the parking is not under me. I'll, I'll kind of defer some of that to Director Burgess. But what I will say is that what I can provide is for parking, uh, apartments that are, that came before the land use board, what the resolution said in terms of parking. So the ones on Gabit Place, certainly I can provide. Uh, there are maybe a couple on Park Avenue that I can provide, because those became before land use boards. Uh, but the, uh, parking regulations, uh, is part of the parking, I mean, it's part of the ordinance.
So I wasn't really looking for the regulations, but, um, really on the part of the buildings that have come before the land use board, um, who has variances and what those variances say is what I'm looking for.
I can provide, like I said, uh, the resolutions approved by the planning board, that says what they are supposed to have.
If I just question the, our process, is that we were in the, in the impression that this was the public's time to ask questions. So then council would then ask if there was follow-up that was required, or we'd do it at the end of public comment, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's do that. All right, so I'm sorry to keep you waiting, uh, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Charlie Lee, I live at thirteen forty-three East Seventh Street. I own that prop, that property approximately going thirty years next month. Directly behind me is that new development on South Avenue, across from Derrickway, the big building. They put the parking lot behind my property. Now, I've never had any issues with my neighbors or anything of the like. Last month, Plainfield Police Department came to my house five times, um, from the hours of three in the afternoon to four AM. ASPCA was dispatched to my property, um, and we had no issues, we said that everything was fine. What's going on is because the parking lot is behind my property, I have a dog. I have, there are three fences separating my property from the parking lot. People are coming and going during hours of the day, in the evening. My dog is suspicious of strange, strange noises, hours, nights, so forth, so on. So he's barking. I have no problem with abiding to, uh, 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 an amendment added to the current E-code as far as the times that my dog can be out without anyone complaining, and the times that he has to come in. Surrounding towns have different times that they can be out, so forth. It's gotten so bad, the last time Plainfield Police came to my house at four in the morning, my dogs are in the basement. The house, the, the three houses along my side all have dogs. Knocked on my door, my daughter, dog with bananas, quite natural, four o'clock in the morning. He said to me, he can hear my dog barking in my driveway. Quite natural, it's four o'clock in the morning, you're knocking on my door, he's going to bark. He eventually, got, got a little bit tight with me, but then he suggested that I put sound deadening material on the inside of my residence. That's horrendous, and that's where the line was drawn, and he and I did not get along any further from that point. So I'm asking that the board take into consideration some kind of amendment, something that can be done so that both parties can, can, can have some way to live. Because it's not fair to me, it's become a lesson, that a resident in a new apartment who's renting is calling the police on me. I'm a taxpayer for almost thirty years. It's not fair to me. I have no issues with my neighbors, they don't complain, because they have dogs. My dog's not out twenty-four hours, right from the daytime. And it's just, I need something to be done. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Seeing no more, I'd like to, I entertain a motion to close public comment.
First of all, I just want to make sure I understand that clears mud explanation of the ordinance. So the ordinance that you passed does not raise taxes. If taxes are going to be raised, this group of people will be the ones to raise the taxes because of the budget. Is that, so I don't know if you can answer me, that's a question. Um, the second thing that I wanted to talk about is just my concern about the pedestrian mall. I think it looks beautiful, but in doing some research for the past two years, um, the statistical rate of failure for pedestrian malls is anywhere from maybe seven to maybe nine percent. And when you were talking about going to Somerset, and I've been there, and it is beautiful, um, the, uh, the median income, the mean income of Somerset is ninety-five thousand dollars. The, um, that same statistic for Plainfield is between seven thousand dollars and fifty. So there's, uh, a little bit of, um, an economic difference there as to who has expend, um, to go to a mall and, um, and spend that money. So two million dollars to me is a lot of money. So my request would be that the taxpayers who are going to foot this bill have a little more input into the, um, into the, the decision making. And I'm not talking about schlupping anywhere and having to go through these checks again, but we have some, I mean, especially now, with the technology in terms of, um, getting input. I mean, you know, we've got surveys that you can take online and, and through the, um, provocalls that you get. And I mean, there's just a myriad of, uh, ways you can get input from the taxpayers who are paying for this. Um, and I would just appreciate that, just because two, two million dollars, um, is a lot of money to me. And the last thing, the Cisco certification training, I think ITs or KPIs. Uh, I am not in government, so the fact that there are KPIs to do this is a little shocking to me. Um, so my question for that is, I think it's a great idea, and when, when will that happen? When will we get KPIs? So, um, we can show that it's, it's a successful program and bring more people in. So I don't know if you can answer me, but those are my questions, and thank you.
Thank you.
We have to give eleven twenty-nine Merl Avenue. Um, I think, um, Councilwoman Davis's idea about having a, a survey of the variances for parking, I think that should also include the parking lot on Park Avenue, Mullenberg Hospital, because I think there were some variances there in the past institutional memory, mine says. And the other day, when I went past there, there were at least thirty to forty cars parked in that parking lot. Um, and it looked like the lot across the street was already full, so, um, I think the nursing school, there might be some, uh, parking variances there. So if you're going to do this redevelopment plan, you take into account, um, the parking spaces there, and make sure that you research that. As far as the pedestrian mall goes, um, last, this past summer, I went with some friends for a meeting, and we planned to go to a restaurant, and, um, it, when we got there on the pedestrian mall in Somerville, it was closed. Um, this past winter, the, uh, Alliance down there had to put, uh, heated igloos in order to get people to use that during the winter months. So, um, you know, more consideration should be given about it. These are going to be some issues that we're going to have to address later, um, to get people to go there during the winter months. And, uh, that's one of those, uh, resolutions that, um, the Alliance down there did. Um, what other issues? Oh, they talked about the, the, the dogs on West Seventh Street. I don't know if you're aware, but I've heard from someone that deals with animals in this town that, uh, anybody having a pet at that new apartment building has to pay fifty dollars a month or more to have a pet in those buildings. So that's probably why the person is getting so upset about hearing dogs, because they moved in, they didn't pay fifty dollars a month, they can't have a pet unless they want to pay extra money. And that adds up, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no more, I'd like to, I entertain a motion to close public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition, abstentions? Public comment is now closed. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition, abstentions? Anyways, adjourn.